Got about one minute to go here and we will be starting the meeting at six o'clock. All right, we'll go ahead and get started. The Monday, May 26, 2020, meeting of the Marquette City Commission is now called to order at 6:00 PM. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, to God, to the people, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, could we have a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Bonzall?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier?
Sir.
Sir.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here. Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, we have an agenda in front of us. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I motion to accept the agenda as written.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Frazier?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes.
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 Yes. All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. Brings us to announcements. I do have a couple of announcements tonight. I have a construction project update from our city engineer. So the Lake Shore Boulevard Phase One relocation project work is progressing on schedule. Smith Construction has completed the underground work on Phase One of the project and continues to shape the roadbed up to the roundabout from Pine Street. Work has started on the underground utilities for Phase Two of the project with roadway work progressing. Marquette Drive, Lakeview Drive, and Union Street package project will start on May 26, that is today, with Phase One of Marquette Drive. Phase One limits are from US 41 to Lakeview-Marquette Drive intersection. The contractor is Aelyn Bergensen, and all residents have been notified along Marquette Drive and Lakeview Drive. The simp and sanitary sewer laterals replacement is scheduled to start mid-June with Overstar Inc. The annual sidewalk replacement and repair project is on tonight's City Commission agenda. The Holly Street Stormwater Crossing Project is essentially complete with the street being paved on May 18. Minor shoulder and vegetation restoration remain and will be completed shortly. Locations for sanitary sewer and stormwater cleaning and televising have been given to the tunnel television. We've been told they'll be starting to televise very soon. And city staff have reviewed projects from last year with some areas requiring additional repairs to lawn and pavement areas. All project notes and information can be accessed on the engineering page of the City of Marquette website. This came from Keith Weddington, our city engineer. Thank you, Keith, for that excellent update. Just wanted to share that as construction season is upon us, but once a year. Brings us to... Oh, I got hung up here. Public comment. There we go. So, public comment may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address when making public comments. Also, please note commissioners cannot immediately respond to public comments. Our chance to do so is at the end of the meeting during commissioner comments. Do we have anyone for public comment this evening? I'll start with City Clerk. If you happen to have any written comment, we'll go there first, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I have more than a couple, so bear with me.
Okay, do you know how many have? Do we have a gauge?
Yeah, I've got one, two, three, four, five, six. They are nonspecific. I can split them up into the two comment sections or just tear through them now if you want.
Let's go ahead and get them out of the way now. So, six public comments that are written and then we'll check to see if anyone is on the Zoom call. Thank you, City Clerk.
Yep, the first public comment is from David Gill at 501 South Lake Street, Unit A. Dear Commissioners, I'm writing on behalf of Drefa Brewing Company, Michigan's first cooperatively owned microbrewery. Having survived the closure due to COVID-19, we are now able to open our taproom with restrictions. We fully support these restrictions for the safety of our customers and staff, but we are concerned that a restricted opening might be even more of a financial hardship than a full closure was. The Michigan Liquor Control Commission has issued a document entitled 2020 Limited Permanent Outdoor Seating Area Permission Application, intended to permit businesses such as ours to create an outdoor service area for our patrons to enjoy our product while still maintaining distancing and other safety measures. We will now be able to build an outdoor seating area that is fully licensed and permitted by the MLCC. My hope is the City of Marquette will take similar measures to relax its usual requirements for such outdoor service areas. Current zoning requirements include an eight-part site plan review process, including a fee schedule, and totaling $11,035 before we can even start to build an outdoor service area. This is a prohibitive amount of money after two months of closure. Prior to the pandemic, we'd planned to go through this process and pay all the fees, but we had to use all our available cash to pay immediate bills while our doors were closed. This is in spite of laying off all our bartenders and cutting our manager and head brewer to half-time. An outdoor service area is a critical part of our business plan and even more so now that distancing measures will be in place for the foreseeable future. I hope the Commission will consider waiving these requirements temporarily while businesses struggle to stay alive while observing the safest possible practices for our patrons. Thank you for your consideration. The second comment is from Nate Ayers. Town Hall Lane in Ewing Township. My name is Nate Ayers. I live on Town Hall Lane on the edge of Marquette County in Ewing Township. I've been here running a farm for approximately two years. In that time, I've been trying to figure out why so many farms are failing in the region. A prime example is the City of Marquette has an ordinance, Chapter 10, Article 4, Farmers Markets and Farm Produce Vendors, which is only what I can describe as the Marquette Discriminates Against Farmers ordinance. It basically says if you're a farmer, the only way to legally sell your goods is at a farmer's market with its limited occupancy. The City of Marquette allows me to buy a permit to sell almost any good in the city limits out of the back of my truck within the law, but the moment you become a farmer and have produce, you're not allowed to sell in the city limits outside of that limited space that is supposed to be reserved for farmers. This space is shared and gives priority to vendors. It can sell anywhere in the city under a different permit. Almost every other city and township in the area allows me to sell my produce or get a permit to sell produce when farmers are unable to get into the farmer's market. By the time applications are reviewed, most farmers will already have their season started. I can't throw away my livelihood because my application wasn't accepted over a craft vendor at a farmer's market. Ultimately, I'm left to ask, what would ever inspire someone to solely target and discriminate against farmers on the city level? What is fair about vendors who aren't discriminated against taking the spots from those who are and forced into that space? Are all the other vendors also banned from the city limits in the same respect you have criminalized farmers and produce? It would be interesting to understand the reasoning why only farmers and produce are targeted. Thank you for your time, and I hope in the future we can make changes so the City of Marquette will take a better stance and show more appreciation to the people who dedicate their lives so the world can eat in a region that is losing these people daily. Thank you and God bless. And third comment is Carol Van House, 607 Brookstone Court in Marquette. I am very willing to forego vehicle access to Washington. Our downtown businesses have demonstrated their commitment to keeping us safe. I ask the City Commission to allow safety tailored services in the fresh air. The access is needed, the revenue is needed, it works in other cities. Let's make it work in Marquette. Sincerely, Carol Van House. The next comment is Alyssa Peterson from 2373 Diorite Street in Marquette. Alyssa writes, "Humans have been finding new ways to do things since the beginning of our existence. Innovation is part of what makes humans humans. During this time, innovation is more important than ever. I ask the Commissioners to please allow local businesses to explore the different options that may suit them. Many simply depend on it in order to survive. I understand the worry that closing down streets will create a festival atmosphere, but if that happens, we just need to innovate again and find ways to make it safer. Ultimately, we won't know what works and what doesn't work until we try, but I'm thinking things like barriers between businesses and signs to remind pedestrians about social distancing would be a good place to start. I know we can find a way to make street seating and shopping safe and successful because our community's favorite businesses depend on it. Thank you for your time and consideration." And then a... Comment from Mike Beck, who is writing from Stevenson, Washington. He says, "Dear Commissioners, as a former city resident who served on the Bike Ability Committee that earned the city a Silver Bike Friendly Community rating from the League of American Bicycleists, I'm writing you today out of a deep concern for the public's health and well-being during the Corona pandemic. It is deeply troubling that the City of Marquette has twisted the governor's stay-at-home order and prohibited active recreation at Prescott Isle Park while allowing motor vehicles to get their exercise on Peter White Drive. This decision is the exact opposite of what the current stay-at-home order allows and also violates the Michigan Combined Laws Regarding Traffic and the Local Promulgation of Traffic Law. Under Governor Whitmer's Order 2020-77 and all previous iterations of the Stay-at-Home Order, nonessential travel is prohibited. There are no essential trips by the public when they take their cars around Peter White Drive. This is a scenic road only. No essential destinations are accessible along Peter White Drive. The very first exception to the Stay-at-Home Order, travel for exercise, be it walking, running, biking, boating. The executive order to protect public health encourages people to exercise outside their homes. Perhaps the city thinks the cars need their exercise, not the public? Since the city has chosen to open the road up to traffic, this includes bike traffic. Under MCL 257.657, bicyclists are afforded all the same rights and responsibilities as drivers of vehicles. Localities are also prohibited under MCL 257.951 from promulgating traffic laws that are inconsistent with the state's Uniform Vehicle Code. The state vehicle code grants bicyclists the right to travel on local roads open to the public. I find it astonishing and deeply troubling that the City of Marquette has perversely twisted the Stay-at-Home Order and the MCL into a ban on bicyclists and pedestrians from Peter White Drive. It seems the city values the exercise of motor vehicles more than it does the health of its citizens. I urge you to reconsider and bring the City of Marquette into line with the MCL and executive order. Close the drive to motor vehicles, essential travel only, and open it to active exercise pursuant to Executive Order 2020-77. If the road remains open to traffic, the city cannot ban bike traffic and travel on this road otherwise open to traffic. Please respect the rights of the citizens during these trying times. Sincerely, Mike Beck." And the final comment for this session is from Frank Jeffarito, 350 East Ridge in Marquette. These are my opinions. "Public Works Originally Scheduled Our Leaf Pickup Too Early. They demonstrated flexibility by rescheduling, however they delayed too long. The notice ought to have read that pickups would occur once the virus restriction eased, but after a new chosen date. Virus safety measures seem easy to accommodate for leaf pickups. Now our city looks unkempt as wind scatters the leaves. When the debris is finally removed, dead grass patches will remain on our terraces and not for the first time. Who pays to repair the damage? The snow is long melted. Please pick our leaves up. Further consequences of this board's negligence are evident at Shyrus Park where we lost more green space for parking lot expansion. Of course, with no public opportunity, this board again ignored ongoing requests to hold hearings before altering our green space. Our members precipitated this insult injury by ignoring repeated warnings that Shyrus Park was eroding into oblivion. They sat deaf and dumb for three years waiting until the road was threatened. They cared less about the natural aspect. With much of the original Shyrus lot gone, more green space was lost due to the expansion of the secondary lot, another double whammy. Now the impervious asphalt and gravel visually blend together. Our once treasured park is now ugly, all for the automobile. This tragedy is compounded by the park's narrowness, thanks to the erosion to the east and the encroaching of those unsightly houses to the west. For 15 years, I recommended a narrow buffer at Lake Shore Site and warned of how buildings near the curve would encroach on Shyrus Park and appear to extend into the Boulevard. How many times must a guy be proven correct? Board members allegedly misappropriated funds that may have helped stabilize the lot as well as our most priceless beach. Instead, they wasted major dollars to denue South Park further from the Founder's Woods and expand the Shyrus Lot. They diverted College Avenue funds to destroy a wooded buffer and provide a traffic loop, drainage infrastructure, and parking for Mr. Stonehouse. Marquette has lofted character with our trees cleared and the land so open. In his closing comments on May 11, the manager said, quote, "Next week, the city is starting to clear mostly underbrush from Founder's Landing across from the new hotel. We are trying to clear non-native things and underbrush," end quote. He blames non-native plants, unsightliness, and that the area collects garbage and human waste. His true reason came ahead of his excuses, that being across from the new hotel. That was evident the moment those words left his mouth, further bolstered by the fact that the disruption to date benefits only the hotel. The fact that it's the mayor's hotel heavily played into this matter. Board members not only gave him most of our lower harbor, but our public green space as well. Latest double whammy. The old who's who allegation strikes again." And those are all the comments.
Thank you, City Clerk. Appreciate it. I'm just checking with Sean Happens here. Do we have anyone on Zoom? It appears we've got four people waiting to comment on Zoom. Okay, Melissa Sprouse is first up. Wait for her to get dialed in here. All right, Melissa, go ahead and... And I'm getting an echo.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Awesome. D. West Bluff Street here in Marquette. I own Hot Plate Pottery on the corner of Washington and Third and Hot Plate Cleaver's on Third Street, and I help to run the gallery by the Market Artist Collective and the Masonic Center. Having three businesses downtown, I'm pretty heavily invested in the survival of our community. On March 16, we closed Hot Plate Stores to insert activity, and we had to delay the opening of... Trying to stay ahead of the storm. This past few months have been gut-wrenchingly hard. We stretched and we've changed our business model to include to-go kits and online classes. These are things that we never... And I know I'm not the only one. Right now, all small business owners are doing the best we can to survive. If any of us wants to be open at all under the new executive order, we're open at 50% capacity, but we still have 100% of the overhead, utilities, inventory, payroll. Add to that all the costs associated with physical dividers needed to keep people from touching things, dividing the tables up, PPE, extra sales... High, sales are low, and we have employees and families to support. To-go service for anyone is a Band-Aid, and our arms have been cut off. We're all trying to do the right thing. We all want to follow the rules, require masks, tables, add barriers. There has to be a way to help our customers feel comfortable and confident enough to come back while at the same time keeping our employees and our community safe. We don't know everything about the virus, but leading health experts... Add to that the requirement for patrons to wear masks, have tables of 10 or less, seat them six feet apart, and your risk is even lower. Many of my customers would likely feel a lot more comfortable coming back to support our businesses to see if they see these precautions being taken outdoors. I've spoken with 13 of my fellow 100-block business owners and messaged many more. The majority... All are in part to vehicle traffic to allow us to safely extend our businesses outside. Concerns include promoting that festival atmosphere and parking, and I get it. Need to recreate that festival atmosphere at Blueberry Fest. There's a huge difference between inviting vendors, hosting live entertainment, and simply moving your existing businesses outside. And parking is always a concern, right? But in this case, there has to be a compromise somewhere for us to allow some business access to a spot to park for pickups and allowing others to have more... To the sidewalk is a great first step, but I'm not sure it's a viable solution between making sure that families are safe shopping and dining on the sidewalk and maintaining social distancing between customers and pedestrians. Producing the vehicle traffic to a closure or a one lane allows a little bit more safety for all. I fully understand that a street closure is a temporary solution. Summer's short, the weather's fickle. Have to move inside, come back in October, but help us to pivot so that we can come back in October. Let the business owners worry about the logistics of how we'll do it and give...
Ms. Sprouse, that's three minutes. Thank you for your comments this evening.
That was it, anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Christopher Durley.
Okay. We've got a Christopher Durley that we're patching in next here. Hang tight, everyone. Looks like we just need Mr. Christopher Durley to connect his audio, and then when you are in, you're able to start speaking, and I will time three minutes.
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. I'll start timing. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, one of my biggest concerns as someone who works in the City of Marquette, who has worked downtown for 10 years, who frequents downtown as a customer, is are we going to be able to do this safely?
Excuse me, Mr. Durley, could you please just state your address, your physical address? Sorry about that.
6444 US 41 South. Excellent. So, are we going to be able to do this safely? We have, if you imagine downtown as a grid coming off of each business's property line going out to the center median, that's not a lot of space for each business. Is every business on Washington Street going to get a spot on the road or the sidewalk if we close down the traffic? If we make it a one-way, what businesses will not get to bring their sales outside? My biggest concern from what I'm seeing from Commissioners' Facebook comments around the web is that no one's really thought of a plan. I know the workshop meeting is tomorrow night, but I just urge everyone to think, can we do this safely? Can we keep six feet apart? Can we follow the governor's executive orders? We don't know how they're going to change, and I feel like if we rush into this decision and then things change two weeks from now, we're just going to be bouncing from point A to point B all the way to Z as it changes every three days like we've seen the last couple of months. So, my big concern is, take your time. We have a lot of summer left. Let's do this smartly. Let's do this educated, and let's make sure that we do it safely so we don't have another wave in Marquette and so people are safe and feel comfortable coming out. It's my concerns.
Thank you very much, Mr. Durley. It's a Ted Finco, I believe. Give us a moment to get him connected here. It appears that's Becky Salmon, actually, so we will leave that one. We'll see who else we might have. Jen Ray is on the line. We'll get her connected. This will be, I believe, the last one, correct? For this public comment session at least. Jen, are you there? Jen Ray? So, waiting to see if Jen Ray is able to get in here. I never saw her come in.
She was in for...
Oh. No, that's the delay on YouTube. We got a couple of screens going here. Hang on, guys. We're working on it. Okay, so it looks like she's not in the waiting room anymore. If she called back in later for public comment, the second public comment, we'd give her a chance then. So, at this point, we don't have anyone else waiting for public comment. The public comment is now closed. Brings us to item number one, consent agenda. Please note that this item does require a roll call vote due to item 1F, Long Line Traffic Markings Contract. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Davis?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
Second motion.
Thank you. Any discussion, Commissioner Davis?
Just real quickly, I'm pleased that we can provide the MERS 457 plan at the request of the employees, and thank you to the city staff for their successful grant application to FEMA, a little over $2 million, to support the Lakeview or the Lake Shore relocation project.
Thank you. Commissioner Schlegel, any comments or discussion?
Just real quick about the long line painting. I love to see it getting done this early in the season. I think that, you know, it makes the most out of the money that we're spending on it, and it's not a cheap project, but I just think that the last couple of years, we've been able to do this the right way, and I'm just glad to see that we're able to do it again this year.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners? City Clerk, could we please have a roll call vote?
Thank you. Commissioner Bonzall?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Commissioner Frazier, you're on mute. If you could unmute yourself, please.
I, yep, I will.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Moving on to new business, item number two, Annual Wetland Mitigation Monitoring and Maintenance Services. City Clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you, Mayor. On November 3, 2011, the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, the MDEQ, issued a Water Resources Division permit that, among other things, provided for the filling of 1.11 acres of wetlands associated with McLoughlin Avenue extension in Marquette, Michigan. The permit required the restoration of .23 acres of onsite wetlands and the restoration of 2.05 acres of offsite wetlands at Prescott Isle. The aforementioned wetlands were restored in 2012 with final planting occurring October 30, 2012. Restoration included .34 acres of onsite wetlands south of Center Street and immediately west of the McLoughlin Extension, .87 acres of offsite wetlands on Prescott Isle north of Lake Shore Boulevard, and 1.25 acres of offsite wetlands on Prescott Isle northwest of the Old Shyrus Swimming Pool. On April 24, 2017, the MDEQ issued a Water Resources Division permit that regulated the effects on Wetstone Creek, adjacent wetlands, and floodplains resulting from the construction of the three roundabouts on US 41, Barriga Avenue, and Grove Street. The project work near the hospital included installation of 140-foot-long by 12-foot-wide by 7-foot-high concrete arch culvert to convey Wetstone Creek under Hospital Drive, reconfiguring the existing flood control basin between US 41 and Barriga Avenue, removing and replacing all overflow piping that directs high flows into the flood control basin and placing 2,665 cubic yards of fill in .41 acres of wetland in order to build Hospital Drive. At Grove Street, the work included removing the old culvert conveying Wetstone Creek under the road and replacing it with a 184-foot-long by 11-foot-wide by 10-foot-high concrete box culvert, removing and reinstalling 71 feet of 8-inch diameter sanitary sewer under Wetstone Creek and adjacent wetlands, removing and reinstalling 70 lineal feet of 16-inch diameter water main under the new Grove Street culvert and installing 12 stormwater outfall pipes at various locations directing flow to Wetstone Creek. Overall, the project placed 6,112 cubic yards of fill below the 100-year floodplain of Wetstone Creek, removed 4,074 cubic yards of compensating material, and increased the storage volume of the Barriga Flood Control Basin. Because of all this work, permit WRP 006364, the Water Resources Division permit, required the city to construct .80 acres of new wetlands. The construction and planting of these new wetlands was completed in the spring of 2018 at Prescott Isle Park, near to and east of the Old Shyrus Pool. The MDEQ permit requires documenting the hydrology at each wetland site, documenting the vegetation present at each wetland site, and controlling invasive species. The report also asks for documentation of any wildlife sightings, documentation of onsite habitat structures, documentation of any apparent contamination, and documentation of water clarity. Per the MDEQ permit, the three wetland sites are to be monitored annually for 10 years, beginning in 2013, with an annual report submitted to the DEQ providing monitoring results. For the roundabout project, the city is required to monitor and author an annual condition and assessment report for the mitigated wetlands for five years, starting in 2019. Requests for proposals were sent out to area consultants on April 14, 2020. One consultant responded to the request, Tri Media Environmental and Engineering, at a cost of $22,750. Fiscal effect, efficient funds were approved under the fiscal year 2020 budget recommendation. Approve the attached professional services contract with Tri Media Environmental and Engineering in the amount of $22,750 and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract. Alternatives as determined by the Commission.
Thank you. City Clerk? Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I motion to approve the attached professional services contract with Tri Media Environmental and Engineering in the amount of $22,750 and to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mayor Protem Hill?
I second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse, any discussion or comments?
Only that, I think, is well explained in the background to the item. It's one that we have to carry on for a period of five years, and this has to be done.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Hill?
Yeah, I have a question. Would it be possible for us to receive an update on the results of what they found? Maybe not every bit of documentation, but it would be very interesting to hear how the projects are progressing and what successes they're having or challenges they're having with the restoration. Could that be included in this work?
And we're going to ask maybe if Dennis might be able to handle that question. The city manager asked me to... The city manager asked me to put that away. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Commission. We do track that internally with a copy of the report, so I'd be happy to have my engineering staff compile that information and, uh, send it along to the city manager for distribution to the city commission. I'd save us a few bucks if we do it in-house.
Okay, that's fair. I, I wondered though, I think the public would like to know what's going on, so I'm hoping that we can have a public presentation like we have on other projects sometime in the future.
Yeah, that's fine. I would be happy to do that again at the discretion of the city manager. I'd have to work with him to get that accomplished, but I don't see that as being a problem.
Thank you.
That's good, thanks. Any other comments from the commission or discussion? Questions? Seeing a lot of shaking head no. All right, so hearing no further discussion, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. Moving on to item number three under new business, sidewalk repair and replacement project. City clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you, Mayor. This project will repair and replace portions of sidewalk which have been determined by the engineering and public works departments to be possible tripping hazards to the public. Sidewalk repair is required by city ordinance. Sidewalks are inspected annually for hazards to the walking public. Sidewalk defects that pose the greatest risk for tripping hazards are a priority for the replacement program. Three contractors responded to our requests for bids and results are summarized below. Associated Constructors LLC, the bid as written or as checked was $60,691. Arrow Construction's bid as checked, $61,952 and 50 cents. And Primo Construction's bid came in at $74,452. Tabulation and checking of bids found no errors. The engineer's estimate for this project was $82,433. Fiscal effect, the current fiscal year 1920 budget has identified $100,000 for this project because the low bid is $39,409 below the budgeted amount. The savings will be applied toward COVID-19 related losses. Recommendation, approve the attached construction contract for the sidewalk project with Associated Constructors LLC in the amount of $60,691 at the unit prices bid and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Bonzal?
Uh, thank you. I, I motion that we approve the attached construction contract for the sidewalk project with Associated Constructors LLC in the amount of $60,691 at the unit prices bid and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign the contract.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
Second motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Bonzal, any discussion?
None, other than that it's great news that it came in dramatically under budget. Um, and I think that it's good news for everybody in the city, especially in these times where there's a certain amount of uncertainty about the near-term fiscal impact of COVID-19 crisis on the city budget that we're coming in under budget and we're able to reallocate that almost $40,000 to mitigate potential fiscal impacts.
Great. Commissioner Schlegel, anything?
Uh, pretty much along the same lines. It's nice to see, uh, things kind of leveling up for us on the construction side and I hope to continue to see that happen throughout the rest of our projects, but, uh, thank our stars when we get ones like this, so that's good.
Great. Any other commissioner? All right, saying no further discussion, all in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. Brings us to item number four under new business. Resolution of support for emergency declaration and exercise of emergency powers. This will be a roll call vote. City clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you, Mayor. In March of this year, Michigan Governor Gretchen Whitmer issued Executive Order 2020-21, which directed residents to remain at home or in their place of residence to the maximum extent feasible in an attempt to suppress the spread of COVID-19, a respiratory disease that can result in serious illness or death. It is caused by a new strain of coronavirus not previously identified in humans and easily spread from person to person. There is currently no approved vaccine or antiviral treatment for this disease. This order was aimed at preventing the state healthcare system from being overwhelmed to allow time for the production of critical test kits, ventilators, and personal protective equipment and to establish the public health infrastructure necessary to contain the spread of infection. Since that time, this general stay-home, stay-safe order has been extended several times with minor changes. In the city of Marquette, as throughout the state of Michigan, this order led to the immediate closure of retail establishments, taverns, breweries, and dine-in restaurants in addition to countless other businesses. While the local community has proven resilient and creative in these difficult times, the economic struggles of city residents and business owners is undeniable. On May 18th, Governor Whitmer signed executive orders 2020-91 and 2020-92, which allow for the limited reopening of certain sectors of the state economy, including retail businesses, taverns, breweries, and dine-in restaurants throughout the upper peninsula. The orders which went into effect on May 22nd require these establishments to undertake several precautionary measures specifically by providing room for safe social distancing and by limiting their seating capacity to 50% of normal. While this is good news for the local economy, these restrictions mean that additional creative solutions may be needed to assist our local business community into the foreseeable future. In response to these local needs, Marquette Mayor Jenna Smith has utilized the emergency powers granted to her in Chapter 20 of the Marquette City Code. On May 21, uh, the mayor declared an emergency in the city and suspended the special land use permitting process for outdoor food and beverage service established in the city's land development code. This temporary suspension will streamline the process for these businesses to establish outdoor seating areas on their own property, effectively expanding their seating capacity. This suspension will continue so long as an executive order of the governor imposes seating and distance limitations on these establishments. All activity must continue to follow the mandates found in the executive orders as well as any requirements from the Marquette County Health Department. All streets and public ways must remain open for traffic and ingress and egress for public safety must be maintained during this time. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, adopt the resolution in support of Mayor Jenna Smith's emergency declaration and exercise of emergency powers. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Bonzal?
Thank you. I move that we adopt the resolution in support of Mayor Jenna Smith's emergency declaration and exercise of emergency powers.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Frazier? Commissioner Frazier, you're on mute. Could you go ahead and verbally?
Come on. I'll take it.
Thank you. And Commissioner Bonzal, any discussion?
I just wanted to say that I think, uh, I wanted to first of all, thank you, Madam Mayor, for taking this, you know, really important action and for speaking to staff and others and working alongside you to make this possible. Um, yeah, I, I also think that, especially given some of the public comments earlier in the meeting, uh, you know, that I think particularly of Mr. Gill, I believe, from Briefer Brewing, talking about, you know, in order to create a beer garden in the city of Marquette under normal circumstances, you would have to go through eight rounds of bureaucratic approval, which would presume to take several months. And, you know, he says it's going to cost, it would have cost a brief, uh, $11,000. To me, that's not a good environment to be doing business in, so maybe this would be an opportunity for us to, one day, once this is all behind us, to perhaps reanalyze certain aspects of our land development code and our permitting process.
Thank you, Commissioner Bonzal. Commissioner Frazier, do you have anything you wanted to add?
I think it's great that everybody enjoys sitting outside because a lot of restaurants has a ability to have a seating outside. A lot of people look for that in the summer. Um, as far as having drinks outside, that's up to the state and the cities working with the state trying to acknowledge all that stuff. So different rules apply for a lot of stuff, but I look forward to all the great, great eating outside this summer.
Thank you. Any other commissioner? Commissioner Schlegel? And just one moment. Commissioner Frazier, if you could go ahead and mute yourself when you're not speaking, we're picking up some background noise. Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Schlegel.
Thank you. Um, I guess, uh, you know, I'm, I'm excited to see this. I think, uh, I'd like to applaud you for the effort as far as the resolution goes. I think that what Mr. Drury said earlier, um, is, needs to be highly noted, you know, the safety component here. We do have, you know, I understand that, uh, that people want to get things, you know, up and running and back, uh, as, to live as possible, but I, I think we have to take a look at the people that are on the front line of, of the businesses, especially of those restaurants, and the way that they've approached this since the, uh, the last EO was, um, was given and they're saying, you know what? We could open in three days, but we're going to hold off because we have our employees to worry about, we have our customers to worry about, we have the social distancing component that we have to figure out. And I just want to say thank you to those businesses that have taken the, instead of taking the, the, the quick route to get going and, and make things happen, that they've, they've taken a step back, um, and, and, and really are doing it. I'm so proud of them for doing it as responsibly as they are and, um, we need to recognize that as a community and make sure that we carry on the same practice with the, with eventually working through these other phases. So I wanted to bring that up because, you know, you, you see a lot of these, a lot of the social media buzz with the restaurants especially, uh, you know, uh, Rondy, Diggs, Stucco's, and they're saying, we're excited to be able to offer our, our businesses to you again, but we're going to do it in the best way possible for you, for our business, and for our employees. And I just really think that that's, uh, that needs to be applauded. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Mayor Pro Tem Hill?
Um, thank you. And thank you too, also, as Commissioner Schlegel said, for, and Commissioner Bonzal for jumping on, on this. Uh, I know I, um, was not quite expecting that we would reopen in, as soon as we did and, but I'm really glad that it's relaxing restrictions and that we're taking it step by step. I do think that we need a, a, a rope, a, a good conversation with lots of different folks at the table to work on allow, what the procedures are going to be and letting there be safety and the chance for innovation and exploration. I, I'm encouraged that we're having the work session tomorrow and I'm wondering if we can make a, um, if there's going to be any chance to talk about things like zoning and how, what, has there been a discussion of the process to think about what comes next after this? We, we had to get the emergency declaration done because of the immediacy of the state executive order, from what I understand, but do we have a sense yet of what the next steps in the process are going to be to, to allow for innovation and exploration?
I could try to answer that, um, as, as we go along here and then I could see if any other commissioners have any further comments. First, I just wanted to thank city staff for putting this together. While it does have my name on it, there are a lot of people in the background that worked to get this together, especially our city clerk here, Kyle Whitney. So thank you, Kyle. Excellent document and appreciate how quickly city staff was able to get this out, the businesses to, to utilize it for Memorial Day weekend. So nice job. Um, and then secondly, Jen, Mayor Pro Tem Hill, uh, talking with the city manager just before this meeting, it sounds like at our work session tomorrow, um, this concept of 100 blocks of Washington will come up, um, but it's something that probably needs a longer, bigger discussion and, um, probably led by the, the DDA with then if, if for some reason they're able to support and approve some kind of a modification, that then that would come to the city commission for review. But that's a little bit of a longer process. The 100 block of Washington has been a hot topic lately. I don't think that we're able to make a decision quickly or, or nor should we. We've got to, um, kind of see with, uh, this emergency declaration I've made and, um, businesses are, are expanding their outdoor seating options. Let's see how that goes and then talk about next steps for the future. Does that kind of answer that question for you, Mayor Pro Tem Hill?
Um, well, I, I understand the DDA has boundaries and I don't, how are we going to move forward with other parts of the community? The, the, the DDA, so I, I do think we're going to, um, and I, I, I'm not saying that we make a decision right away, but I do think we need to develop a process that allows for some, um, for folks to, to know, when's the meeting going to be? How, how, who's going to be invited? How are we going to, um, you know, what's going to be on the table? I, I, and if that's just the DDA, how are we going to go beyond the boundaries?
I guess I thought you were talking about the 100 block of Washington topic that has been brought up, closing that off, that's been a topic. So you may be talking about some other innovations that would also be a, a great topic of conversation for the work session tomorrow. Um, but I'm not, and I guess I'm not understanding because I thought you were talking about the 100 block of Washington, so I'm sorry and misunderstood.
Um, yeah, and it's, uh, I think, I mean, that's part of it, right? Like, there's just so many moving parts and there's restaurants and what restaurants can do and the liquor control stuff, but then there's other businesses and as, you know, Mr. Drury said, how are different, you know, there's still only so much real estate and how are we going to make those decisions? And I, I think we need to give ourselves the, the process and the time to, it's going to take back and forth and, and, and not just one meeting. I mean, it's going to take multiple opportunities for people to be heard. I, I, there's so many different things we have to think about. So I'm asking that there be something developed that, that has multiple meetings and multiple opportunities for people to communicate about this.
And I'm hearing from city manager Angelique that that could happen at the DDA level to some extent, but I, I, I hear you, Mayor Pro Tem, and let's continue that conversation at our work session tomorrow, which could potentially be the first of many meetings, depending on how that goes. Maybe that's not necessarily always a city commission work session, but it's something to talk about.
Right. That sounds good.
Okay. Any other commissioners with discussion or comments? Commissioner Stonehouse, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank you for taking the initiative to put out the emergency decrees we can begin to get the city moving. That's critically important, but all of us need to understand that what we're doing is not something that we're going to be doing that will be here forever. Whatever changes we might make, whatever adoptions we have, they are short-term and they will last as long as the governor's emergency order. And that becomes the trick, that we're not building something here that's going to be laid in concrete. We're building a product, hopefully, that is, that is capable of shifting a little bit as she goes through another set of EOs and finally releases us to the real world again, at which point I assume we go back to the way we've been doing business. Yeah, thank you very much for, for taking the initiative.
Good point. Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse, something to consider as we move along here. Anyone else, any comments on this topic before we go ahead and vote? Commissioner Frazier, go ahead, and I think you need to unmute. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, it's good, yeah, DDA can control all their areas. It's a good thing to work with DDA and just work with them. They have a good thing to do for them. There are a few businesses outside of DDA district that might need, you know, advice and outside seating or da-da-da. So it's a good thing we should probably take DDA's rules and just apply that to everybody else. I mean, just come up, whatever DDA comes up with, we should use that as a format to come up with everybody else. I agree with Mayor Pro Tem, but it's something that we can give to other people as a way to get along, that's a good way to do it.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anything else? Come around here. Okay, hearing no further discussion, city clerk, could we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hill?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Brings us to our second public comment session of the evening. We've already read all of the written public comments. We're just going to check and see if we've got anyone on Zoom. Oh, there is one more written comment. I see both Kyle and Sean flagging me down simultaneously. They weren't going to let that one slide. Uh, go ahead, city clerk, with the one written comment.
Okay, so, uh, I have a comment from Frank Jeff Ferretto. These are my opinions. Mr. Stonehouse lied when he said sensitivity would be used when parcel two was developed. The building is majorly imposing and blocks the views of residents who were told their views would be respected. No viable public opportunity was ever offered, step by step, hurdle by hurdle. This board totally, totally ignored three requests from unrelated citizens to provide a depiction, rendering, or site plan, anything that might have helped us comment on whatever was proposed, reading after reading, nothing. One look at the result illustrates why our fair participation was denied. The building looms over the boulevard just as residents feared. As a result of this alleged malfeasance, three mature trees and a smaller one were felled. felled, coincidentally smack dab in front of the mayor's building. Yet another double whammy. Again, no viable public opportunity was provided. The same applies to his god awful glitzy townhouses that block our view from the roundabout and his pitifully designed larger building. He takes and takes and takes, especially while he's here running our meetings. The manager uttered his intentions to compromise our founders' woods at the tail end of a virtual meeting with no public opportunity. In fact, he announced this after all the members had spoken their last words, not that any would have cared. The fact is, not even they received the chance. With a manager this rogue, why do we bother wasting money on a commission? The manager is accused of granting special privileges for his buddies, as was also accused when South Beach Park was denuded without a requested public hearing. Our board members disregarded all the above, just as they did when the mayor constructed a patio and fence on our Rosewood Pocket Park without the proper permit. History subsequently repeated itself when a former city engineer built stairs along our public beach with no notice or properly issued permit. In all these cases, long-running requests for public hearings ahead of any alteration to our green space were ignored, which literally encourages the next insane blunder. Our board members' idea of proactive is to wait until inevitable public injury occurs and just let it happen. This explains why they're too gutless to address the allegations. Their modus operandi promotes reactionism, public dissension, and bitter hatred. Great work. For 21 years, we've carefully documented their cancerous manner of eating away at our green space with their sick greed and favoritism, especially for the mayor, who only attends meetings when he has money to make. To top everything, on May 11th, the manager mentioned, quote, "the temporary cliff-dow trail on the east side of the property along the railroad grade," end quote. The railroad grade is to the west. He's the manager who rampantly hacks away our green space, yet he can't discern west from east or provide us a sample site plan, not even for a major development along our lake shore. His mentality is straight out of the fourth world.
Thank you. Do we have any comments on Zoom waiting? All right, first we have Jen Ray. Ms. Ray, we'll get you loaded up here and then, all right, I see you on. Go ahead, you've got three minutes.
West.
Looks like your audio is still connecting, one moment.
Not even a major development along our lake shore. His mentality is straight out of the fourth world.
Uh, Ms. Ray, if you could please either turn off or mute the YouTube recording, we're getting some feedback. And then once you have the YouTube handled, if you, if you have a comment, go ahead and unmute. We're ready for your comment. Jen?
How are you all?
I'm doing well. Go ahead, we've got three minutes. Yep.
Okay. I'm Jennifer Ray with, at 431 East Ridge in Marquette, Michigan, and one of the owners of Donkers and the Delph Bistro. I am just kind of reiterating sort of a lot of what Melissa said. I don't want to be redundant, but, you know, we closed, made the decision actually before it was mandated by the governor. We closed on the Sunday beforehand, just knowing that safety in our community and our staff was priority number one. We are trying to reopen in a slow manner and have already started the past two weeks with pickup and deliveries, but, and looking at reopening. I do know that there's not going to be one size fits all for all the businesses. There's pluses and minuses, even to what you already have done. You know, we only have so much outdoor seating. We have a little bit, but we don't have a parking lot to expand into. We will take all the precautions we can and do the best that we can for our business. And I know many others are doing the same. And, but my real concern is, is making it viable. We all know that the summer months are when the businesses make enough money in order to survive the winter. And I want to see whatever can be done. And I don't know. I know there's lots of concerns and I've kind of thought about a lot of them. My biggest concern, I think we can deal with the parking, I think we can deal with the crowds. I don't think they're going to be that in the way of a festival on a daily basis. And I think there's, the other issue of, you know, being fair is my biggest concern. You know, which blocks would you be able to open up? Then that gives unfair advantages to some businesses and not others. I know you all are looking at all of these aspects and trying to figure out the best solution. I just want to see this discussion continue. I want to see the discussion of having one way down the middle, so both sides get access to more outside seating. I want to have discussion about whether we shut down the streets entirely. You know, do we do it for a month? Do we do it for two months? I know this is ever-changing, but the viability of these small businesses, our community, you know, everyone wants to shop local, but if they can't get in there and we can't survive just on locals. I mean, we know tourism is going to come to some degree. I, I want to see our community and our businesses be downtown, not just on the 100 block. I want to see it all the way down to the co-op and beyond. I want to see Berega Street, Third Street, our entire downtown community survive, all businesses. And we all know that this is going to be a real struggle of a year. So if we can.
Ms. Ray, that's been three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have anyone else on Zoom? Is this the last one? Um, Ms. Brum, when you're ready, I'm going to get you connected here.
Hello, this is Margaret Brum. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. I'm going to go ahead and get the clock started now. You've got three minutes.
Okay, Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street, Marquette. I have a question, and I think it's for the city manager. I'm looking at the consent agenda for the long line traffic market markings contract, and we're looking at spending between $26,000 and $30,000. From the best of my recollection, the city of Marquette bought its own painting machine, traffic painting machine. The reason given, it was too difficult to find contractors who would work up here. And I'm confused because I thought the reason we bought our own machine was so we didn't have to use outside contractors and save the money. So that's a question, it's, it's not a criticism, it's a question. I don't understand why we're using outside contractors. And in terms of the comment about the leaf pickup, we had weird weather last fall, and I know we didn't finish our raking on Magnetic Street before we got those two early snowstorms. And the leaf pickup and the brush pickup for the last two weeks has gone off like clockwork on exactly the day they said it was going to go off. So I don't have any criticism whatsoever. In fact, I applaud the city for being able to do something as necessary as leaf cleanup in a time of public emergency. And that's the end of my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Brum. Anyone else for public comment?
No.
All right, we have no further comment this evening. Brings us to comments from the commissioners. Commissioner Stonehouse, if you could start us off.
Well, thank you very much for that rare, rare, rare honor. I'm going to go back to just talking for a second about the DDA. It wasn't very good. Talking about, talking about the DDA and using them as the point people, obviously, for what we should be doing and how we should be supporting our, our local business downtown and, and changes we might make. But again, more for that tomorrow. I do have a question that I would ask the city manager if he could talk to, and that is the farmer sale issue that Nate was talking about, that when I do see periodically a big farm truck pull up next to the Admiral Station on Washington Street, for example, and they're selling off the truck, I wonder, again, if there's not something there that's, that's, is more illusion than reality. Also, some concern with the comments from Mr. Gill at Drifta. It's my understanding that the, the outdoor seating area is something the city can handle, but if the second you begin to serve alcohol, it's got to be a state of Michigan issue and a different set of applications that go in for that. So I guess we just need to make sure that we're, we're all talking the same language on those things. I will express some disappointment with the governor in that although she has been very free with putting out executive orders to do this, that, and the other thing, and very kindly, I guess, allowed us to open our restaurants at 50% and allowed us in turn then to move outside seating. And the city quite happily doing its best to make all those things work, your executive orders, your emergency orders, for example, create to make that happen. But yet the state doesn't do anything on their side. I mean, the folks at Lara very easily could have simply allowed, temporarily held in abeyance the rules that they will apply for alcohol outside. They could have done that, I think, by governor's order. They could have done it on their own authority, or perhaps it would have taken the legislature to have done it, but it could have been done and would have made it much easier on all of our small business trying to do exactly that, which is not really an outlandish thing at all, be able to sit down, have a good hamburger, and have a beer at the same time. I will commend the city too for its, it's really, it's good work it's done during this difficult period when we've been operating under lockdown at home and all of the issues that we've been working our way through. City services have not stopped. City services have been exemplary. They've been there when we've needed them. They've done what's been expected. The much maligned leaf pickup, I thought, went off like clockwork. And doing that around weather and around snowstorms and around all the changes, our environment, that we're used to dealing with and we adapt to and we make it work. So it's, it's a little disconcerting to hear people make comments against that. And I support Ms. Brum for, for really talking to what she's seen and the value there. But thank you for the time, your honor.
Sure, I'm just, thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. I'm just going to give a heads up, city clerk, after commissioner comments, if you could address that question about the farmer, maybe just start to formulate that. I'm hearing some chatter here that you may have an answer on that, but we'll keep going on commissioner comments and come back to you before we get to the city manager's comments. Mayor Protem Hill, you could go ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to say that the, okay, found my spot here. The, the, in addition to the ability to have more retail now and more restaurants and bars, the library, if folks don't know, is looking at curbside services and also more services where you can call and book a librarian, they're calling it. And curbside is going to start on June 8th. So again, in a step-by-step process and the phases are on their website at peterwhite.info, peterwhitelibrary.info. I think, I want to acknowledge that it's been two months that we've been living with this new virus and everyone who's been making all kinds of sacrifices from being unemployed to figuring out with the schools closed, how that we manage that. There's been tremendous challenges and changes that everyone's had to adapt to. And if you need resources, please don't hesitate to contact me or reach out. We have all, it's, the situation is that unfortunately, the easy thing was shutting everything down. And the harder part is going to be as we figure out how to safely relax restrictions as we move towards whatever is going to come next in learning to live with this virus. Since we have, some people get away with a cold and other people have much more severe consequences, and of course, there's the loss of life. So I am, I want to thank to the National Guard, which has been working really hard to support our emergency managers and has been out there doing service behind the scenes to make sure a lot of things are getting out to people and getting done. And I finally want to say, I don't, I know we're going to talk about this tomorrow, and it's not that I don't think the DDA can be part of leading this conversation of what happens next. I'm just, I want to make sure that we're having a community conversation. The DDA is a tax financing entity in the end and serves a particular set of institutions and, and businesses and in certain geography, and that's very important work and they're doing very good things. But we've got a lot of issues in front of us. And boy, did I hear about Presque Isle Park these last two weeks, for example, and what's happening with parks and recreation. So I think we want to really, I'm, my goal is to say that we have as much communication as we can, and we'd really like to hear from you what your concerns are, what are you seeing, and what, what innovations can we do to make, get through this and still have a healthy, safe society? Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bonzal, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I first just wanted to note that, of course, yesterday was Memorial Day. I think this meeting was a great example of American democracy, of self-government, freedom of speech, certainly, and that ultimately, all of those things are owed by us to previous generations of Americans who gave the ultimate sacrifice so that we could all have those freedoms. So I just wanted to take a minute to acknowledge that. It's something I've been thinking about the last couple of days. I also just wanted to note that we have had quite a bit of good news since our last meeting two weeks ago. City parks are mostly reopened, with the exception of playgrounds and various public facilities like restrooms and things of that nature. Local businesses have started opening back up. Many local, many more local businesses have gotten access to state and federal relief funds than they had as of a month ago, according to the DDA survey. We also do need to face the hard truth that these are extraordinary times and they require extraordinary measures. And we need to be treating this present public health crisis and the looming economic crisis that are facing our community and our country with the urgency and the seriousness that they deserve. So I'm really looking forward to our conversation tomorrow. Just wanted to note that I do strongly support Mayor Smith's use of her emergency powers to help local businesses, also the excellent work that's being done by the city and especially the DDA has been doing a fantastic job of both getting things done and also communicating with the public. So I'm really looking forward to during our COVID-19 response work session tomorrow, having a serious and productive discussion about the city's response to COVID-19 and what more we can do to help our community overcome the unprecedented challenges we're facing. Because I do believe we do, we need to do more. We need to act responsibly. And as a couple of people noted earlier in the meeting during public comment, we need to act judiciously and, and be considering all different viewpoints and doing things in a fair manner, in a safe manner that puts public health first. But we do need to be doing more, I think, as a city with our community partners to help our local businesses and our local residents through this crisis.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Schlegel, you're up.
Not a lot tonight. Well, you know, I always say that, but then I ramble. But I'd like to thank again the, the city staff for the work that they've done. Glad to hear that everybody's going to be back to work here shortly, but you wouldn't know that we were short-staffed with a lot of what you've seen around town and the services that we have not, had seen any kind of sacrifice. I just, I'm really, really impressed with that. I would encourage all small business owners, anybody in the business sector that is feeling the effects of this coronavirus at this time, to go ahead and, and I'm talking about write down everything that, that you're being impacted by this pandemic and, and get it to our representatives, get it to our senators, because, you know, at some point in time, I have a, I have a feeling that there's going to be some sort of gesture. And I don't want you to be behind the eight ball when, when something happens where they say, hey, you know, we're going to, we're willing to help you with this, but we need you to give us this information. So if you could, I would encourage you to, to go ahead, and I'm talking about, you know, employee lost time, expenses, utilities, everything. And I, I'm just trying to be proactive with this. And I don't know anything other than what I'm, I'm, you know, personally kind of guesstimating right now, but I just would hate to think that something comes available, there's some sort of monies, and then people aren't up to snuff on, on as much as they could be. So I would encourage you to take as much time as you can to kind of justify your, your, your losses at this time. And then general population, we have got to, we've got to stick this out. There's a reason why we're in, we're in pretty good shape up here, and it's because we were responsible in order to, to hunker down and, and to stay in place, to wear your masks, to limit your space, or to your, your involvement and interaction with others. I, I get it, our population isn't what Wayne County has, but we did a damn good job of taking control of this pandemic and keeping it from getting worse than it, than it was. And, uh, in, in two days or three days, you've seen a lot of laks coming from the general population. And we have got to stay the course with the face masks and stay the course with the social distancing. And, you know, we're close, but we've got to stick together on this and, um, uh, and be polite about it, you know, and encourage your friends and your neighbors. Go ahead and, and get together in groups smaller than 10 and, and, and keep your, keep your space. But please, um, when you're out in public, when you're around other people, if you're not doing it for yourself, do it for somebody, you know, do it for them. But we have got to finish this. We've done such a good job and I'm proud of everybody in the way that they've handled this, considering the, the impact that it's had on us all. And, uh, and we just got to, you know, let's finish this. Let's, let's get this thing out of here instead of allowing it to, uh, you know, ramp up again. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Frazier.
Good cop, Mr. Paul. I think it's a good, I know a lot of businesses too, it's like Mr. Schlegel does. And they all are been hurt by this, by this pandemic, you know. All the big box stores have been making it because they're just staying open and do what they can. Some restrict or others, um, but I see a lot of, you know, comments on social media, something like that. How come all the big box stores get dealt, well, look, this is hurting, which I understand because, you know, all local businesses sell the same product, but they all getting hurt by this. I agree. Good thing to, you know, write down, tell the, the state what's going on with India. I know Wisconsin, they tried to extend the lockdown too. And they, the, the government said, okay, nope, we're going to stop it. And so I, I feel bad for, everybody thought we were going to get going again. The city thought we're getting going again. And all of a sudden, we get this letter from down, down south and, oh, we're going to, I'm going to extend it again. Which is just too bad because everybody thought we were going to go back, try and get back to normal slowly but surely. And like, Miss Hill, Mr. Hill said, try and act, you know, right and keep everything good. But then we just, I didn't get so, so bad for local businesses trying to get going. And at least the weather's been good so far and all the boats are out and about. Rain has been hopping, but you know, slowly but surely we'll get back to normal, I feel. And I know, I'm sure all the kids are, um, hoping the playgrounds opening up someday early, sooner or later. And then also, I've seen a lot of comments online of, um, spread for our, you know, seniors in high school or college or whatever, not be able to, you know, walk our stage and actually graduate, get diplomas, all that stuff. And because it's no problem for us to walk and be all through Walmart and all those big box stores and bring it together. But we can't sit and watch, you know, a bunch of people let, but let our kids sit together and go walk to a little celebration of the graduation of their hard work and stuff like that. That's only I feel bad for is all the graduates, you know, from high school or college having to go through this. That's only just about, and that, hopefully they're going to get better and we'll look forward to go summer.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I want to thank all of the businesses that took the time out of their schedule to speak to us tonight. It is really good. It's important for us to hear from you and what we can do as a city within our purview. I hope that you join us again tomorrow night and I hope that you are joined by businesses from outside the 100 block and what, and different types of businesses. I have also heard from short-term rental folks that they would like to open up. That's one of those things that is not within our purview at this time, but with the governors. But anything that the city can do to, um, help your personal path to recovery is something that we're interested in. I also want to share a concern that has been expressed to me several times over the past week and a half. And that is the traffic at the intersection of 41 and Genesee. Navigating the closely spaced driveways and streets is difficult at present. The community members, and there have been several that have spoken to me, have expressed great concern about the changes in the types of businesses at that corner and combined with the new hotel and the future housing that is close by and the overall safety of that particular intersection with, and particularly as it pertains to the driveways and the number of cars that could be going in and out. So I just asked that we as a city staff and as a commission be very conscientious about the potential for those safety concerns at that intersection as that area is developed and redeveloped. And that is it.
Thank you. So the few things tonight, um, so looking at, we had quite a few public comments this evening. Many businesses, definitely appreciate businesses taking some time to let us know their concerns. Some of those concerns were addressed already by the emergency declaration that, that was made last week. Some of these conversations about the 100 block of Washington closure or not will continue into the future. The commission itself does not have the sole ability to make that decision. Would need to be in conjunction with the DDA. And even so, I think it would require quite a bit of data and research before a decision is made. So while I appreciate the comments, I don't know that there is going to be a, a, a very quick action one way or the other on that, just so the businesses tuned in or, or hearing that. But thank you for, for tuning in and let's keep that discussion going. I also appreciate the, the leaf pickup and the brush pickup by the City of Marquette. I think that they've done an excellent job pushing that timeline back. And I appreciate the, the comment by Margaret Brum on that. The long line traffic question that, that Ms. Brum had, I will let the city manager speak about that. But the long lines we contract out, the short lines or, or kind of everything else, we do ourselves. So I'll let him explain that, but there is a difference and that's why we do contract this piece out still. And it sounds like we will continue to do so. Just looking to see if I've kind of covered the majority of the comments this evening. Looks like I've got most of them and I know the rest of the commission did too. So a couple of things, we do have a work session tomorrow that we've alluded to quite a bit, but I wanted to be clear, it's at 5:00 PM. I believe it'll last about two hours. So from about 5:00 to 7:00, we'll be back here on Zoom. There's a link on the City of Marquette website. You can either watch on YouTube or if you'd like to comment or participate, you can watch on Zoom and then have a chance to get involved in the public comment portion of the meeting. And there's two options for public comment, beginning or the end. We'll be talking about COVID-19 response with some of our partners, such as the Lake Superior Community Partnership, Invest U.P., the Downtown Development Authority, City Staff. So it should be, um, an informative evening and then a chance for the commission to kind of ask questions and get some more information. And it may spur future conversations. Again, may or may not be future city commission meetings, but, um, we'll, we'll see what, what comes of it. But it's an opportunity for us to kind of get a finger on the pulse for what's already happening in our community and what resources are available for businesses that's already going on. Just a, a note for commissioners and for the public. At this point, obviously, this meeting is all on Zoom. Tomorrow night is all on Zoom for commissioners. I'm thinking in June, as long as there's no big changes, that I will ask the commission to come back to City Hall and have the meetings here. We'll be six feet apart. We'll wear masks as we enter the room and then take our masks off for the meeting and then wear them as we leave. The public, however, would still be calling in either via Zoom, phone, or email. That's kind of what I'm thinking unless some big announcement comes out with another executive order, just to give the public a, a feeling for what we're looking at moving forward and the commission as well. And then finally, I just wanted to, to say that I, I know this is a difficult time for individuals, for businesses, for everyone to kind of navigate, right? We've got a new normal going on. Social distancing is kind of awkward. Masks are kind of strange. Washing your hands and hand sanitizer feels a little weird when you're doing it in front of someone. And it's just kind of a, a new normal, right? And I just think it's important to note that everyone has their own boundaries of what they feel comfortable with. And the more that we all as a community can work together to acknowledge that we each have our own boundaries and be kind to one another as we navigate this, the better off we're all going to be. And I think Marquette is going to do that anyway. But just to keep that in mind, um, maybe you don't agree with how someone is handling the situation, whether that's social distancing or masks or those things. But just be kind to one another as we figure this out because it's going to be bumpy. It's going to be awkward and that's okay. I think one of the best things you can do is just acknowledge the fact that it's awkward as all get out and, and move on. But, um, just, just a note to, we're all in this together. It's super weird for all of us. We're going to get through it. And I think in a couple of weeks or a couple of months, this new normal is not going to feel as strange as it does right now. That's all I had for tonight. I'm going to ask, um, city clerk to possibly, if he has any answers on the farming question, and then we'll go to comments from the city manager. Go ahead, city clerk.
Thank you. So I'm just going to try to explain the process a little bit. I'm not entirely sure what the, the commenter, um, is looking to do necessarily. But just, just by way of an overview of business licenses that might apply here, our office issues several types of business licenses in a year. Some of those are mandated by state law that locals license specific types of establishments, secondhand stores and jewelry stores fall into that category. There are several other types of businesses that we, um, we license under the city code, under various provisions of the city code. Substantially, I mean sidewalk cafes, outdoor merchandise displays, because we've been talking about those. But also mobile food vending trucks, hotels and motels in the city are all, all licensed annually by our office. When it, I will say, the vast majority of the businesses in the city, we get people calling all the time and asking if their business needs to be licensed. Most of them don't. So if, if you're going to start a grocery store where you sell farm produce, we don't have a license for that. You can run a grocery store, um, as far as we're concerned in the city without, without a local license. Then there are three different types of licenses for people looking to sell things. And they're, they're a little archaic, I think, in their language. One is a hawk or peddler because that section of our code was written a while ago. And that's for somebody who is, uh, going to essentially go door-to-door and either sell what they have or solicit orders. Transient merchant is a license that we issue to somebody who is going to be in a physical location, but only for a short period of time. So if they're going to have a pop-up shop on someone else's property, they'd have to get zoning approval, but they could sell Christmas trees, for instance, is one that we see in the city every year. Then there's also a farm produce vendor license. And the way that one is structured is you can get licensed either as a farmer's market organization or as a, an individual farm produce vendor to sell farm produce. But according to the code, you can only sell that farm produce at a designated farmer's market location in the city. And those get designated by resolution of the commission. I looked back a couple of years ago on this. You know, I don't, I don't know specifically why it was structured that way. And I don't know why these decisions were made, but there are three, I think, at present that are farmer's market locations. One is at the Commons, of course. One is, um, Washington Street, further, um, down near Pat's Bar area. And one is at, actually, I believe it's still standing. There was one years ago at least at Washington and Fourth in the lot across from like Little Caesar's in the Mining Journal there, that parking lot. And two of those are private property. So just because it's, you know, designated by resolution of the commission years ago as a farmer's market area, you would still need to get the, the license to actually hold a market there or sell goods there. And then, of course, the person who owns the property would have to be okay with that as well. So through that, through, basically, all we do with this every year for farm produce is the, the gentleman who sells next to Pat's Bar gets a license every year for farm produce. And then there is a section of the code that allows us to license an organization. And the DDA gets that license. They pay for the organizational license and then from there, they, they organize everything. They charge their vendors as they see fit.
Thank you, city clerk. I would encourage Mr. Nate Ayers, I believe it was, with, from Ewing Township to contact our city clerk's office probably to get some more information. And city staff, let the commission know if there's something that we can do to help. But it sounds like there are, uh, rules and regulations in place to allow this to happen for that type of business. I'm seeing some head nods. All right, brings us to comments from the city manager. I'm going to hand my, uh, laptop over to him. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First comment I want to make is that the final stages of our curbside pickup is occurring this week. The leaf and our mulch will be progressing. I realized there was one comment during public comment and we, and trust me, we try every year to pick the perfect couple of weeks and we very seldom are successful. You know, as much as we try to match things up with the weather or with people's schedules, it just never works out perfectly, but we do our best. I was rather impressed that Mayor was correct about the long line painting.
Rather impressed.
I'm sorry. The, uh, uh, Ms. Brum was correct. I mean, we did, uh, take on a, a large portion of that painting on our own. But, uh, it's for the parking spaces, the turn arrows, the things of that nature that we are painting at all the intersections, the crosswalks. The long line is, are just the center lines. And because we can get a, a good price just on that alone, when they come through town, we were able to get that done cheaper than we could before and we can get it done a lot earlier. That same company used to have to stick around or come back later to do the, the short lines or the parking spaces and that's what complicated things for us. So we do do both now, but the long line painting is considerably less than, uh, than what it used to be. I've been asked a question or two about tourist park. We had originally planned on opening that on the 28th because we were hoping that the governor's stay safe at home order would have expired. We are trying our best to stay in line with those orders. And, uh, so that park probably will not open now until the governor reconsider's again in another two weeks, or is it another week? It's two weeks. So, uh, we'd like to get that park open as soon as we can, but it's, it's still hanging out there. And lastly, I just want to comment that, uh, we've had a discussion here, uh, myself with the mayor. And I think we're looking at June 8th, which is the next commission meeting for the full commission to be back in chambers. Distancing from each other with no public and just a few staff, kind of like the first meeting we had when this all started. I think it's a good step in the right direction. And lastly, I too look forward to the, uh, conversation tomorrow night. There'll be five presenters because when this work session was first suggested, it was more based on economics and it was a broader focus than just, say, for example, with closing off of the street. You're going to hear about the city finances and our struggles. Mary Simpson, our finance director, you're going to hear about some of our personnel issues. From our H R director, John LaPage, we have Becky Salmon from the DDA who will be here to explain everything that the DDA is, is doing and willing to do. Amy Krichner will be available from the LSCP. And lastly, Marty Patante, who represents Invest U.P. to speak more of a, a U.P.-wide, uh, economic impact. That's all I have.
Perfect. We are adjourned at 7:27 P.